All right, the time is 6:30. I will call to order the Monday, April 17th, 2023 Committee of the Whole. We will move to the roll call.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Adam Giggis.
Here.
Richard Hearn.
Present.
John Glenn.
Here.
Sean Zabinski. Armit Kiefer. Mitchell Cale. Nellie Peter.
Gareth Dean Peterson.
Here.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the Approval of the Minutes section for Agenda Item 1. Approval of Minutes for March 20th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by Richard to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Reports section, we have Agenda Item 2, Recreation Park Ice Center Edition Bid Results.
Yeah, I got Kelly Claflin here from Keller Incorporated to go through what we got back from, for the bids for Recreation Park addition to the Ice Center. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly just for a review and answer any questions and then we'll go through that after he goes through his little report here. Thank you, Joe. I got a handout here. While that's being handed out, get right to the point, the bids came in substantially higher than what we had hoped for. Three main reasons for that, people are extremely busy right now. It's just what's going on. The other thing is the timing of it, our bid, not optimum time to bid a project. And we had a little bit of a scope creep from the original budget, which was approved last August. But in front of you, the bids, let's just go through them. We broke the project down into 16 divisions of work. And on the bid unit number one, earthwork and utilities, Gurkey was the only bid that we received on that. And quite honestly, that's pretty typical. They're the main player in your area here. They're very competitive, they're a good company, and nobody wants to bid against them the way it seems. So their bid was $77,465. The metal building, part of the project bid unit number two, low bidder, we received three bids. Low bidder was Fowler &amp; Hammer of $352,000. They are also the mason contractor out at the fire station right now. And we got another bid of $364,000. That kind of tells me that the bids were pretty good there if they're that close. So Fowler &amp; Hammer was the low bid on that. Mathi Construction, pretty much, again, they kind of rule the area in asphalt paving. Only bid we got there, $27,564. I guess I'm going to just kind of backstop here a little bit. Prior to going out to bid, me and three other guys from our company, we were on the phone like for two weeks just begging contractors to bid this job. Everybody is so busy right now. We did all we could, we put this in the Builders Exchange, the Northwest Builders Exchange, La Crosse Builders Exchange, Fox Valley. And Keller has a software program called Procore where we sent it out to hundreds of people that know about this job. Becky listed it in the paper, this is a Class 2 notice, so you have to publish it in the paper for two weeks. So people were aware that this project was going on, so I should have stated that earlier. Bid unit number four, cast and place concrete, we had three bidders. Low bidder was Tri-City Concrete at $84,750. And you can see there's quite a gap between the other two. Gurkey did, well, $30,000 difference. So, and Tri-City is also doing the fire station, they're doing a fine job for us out there. We did not get a bid on the resinous flooring, that's just to put a hardener on the floor. But I'll have another handout here with all the bid tabs and everything to show what the total cost is. So we put an allowance in there for that, so, to cover that. Masonry, again, Fowler &amp; Hammer was the only bidder on that. We had three bidders or contractors that said they were going to bid it, but Fowler &amp; Hammer is the only one that received on bid date. Carpentry, we only had one bid on the carpentry, American Construction, local contractor, they're also working on the fire station. Fine contractor, but again, certainly wish we had more bidders. Luminum entrances, we had two bids, Corcoran and Mobil, very close there. So Mobil Glass was the, was the little bidder there. Casey's, one bid on overhead garage doors. Again, Casey's is doing the fire station, good contractor, no problem there. Two bids on the flooring, Basement Brothers. And what the flooring is, that's, all we're doing is putting in a rubber floor, the athletic flooring, so the skates and stuff, you can walk on it. You have rubber flooring in your, in your front entrance there and in the concessions, so we matched that. So Basement Brothers at $42,000. H.G. Martin was an acoustical ceiling contractor, $45,000, only one bid there. Master Pro, only one painter, this company does work with us a lot. Good company. Only one bid again on the fire protection, Ahearn, a large company. No, they're very reputable, been in business a long time. Plumbing, we got four bids. Low bid on the plumbing was Hengel Brothers at $62,675. And then over, turn the sheet over. HVAC, we had two bidders on the HVAC, Wisconsin Mechanical Solutions, was at $189,000. And the electrical, we had three bids, and the little bid there was Pullinger. So when I totaled the bids, when I left here on bid date, I had an assistant here taking all the bids, low bids, and putting all our design fees, our construction management fees in there, left here, we were at $2.1 million on last Thursday. So here's another handout, thank you.
Get back.
Of all the parent low bidders. And I went through all the bids with every contractor, knowing that we're way over budget, asking if there had any ideas, value engineering ideas to save some money. And so we did come up with some items here. On the earthwork, Gurkey said they could use, instead of a double gate fence, a single gate fence, and that would save $3,800. The carpentry bid was, at the time, was $402,000 when we bid it. Went through the bid, they had, this is why I review the bids, they had insulation in the ceiling and insulation in the walls in their bid, and they weren't supposed to do that, we also have that in the steel bid. So we took that out. And then some other value-saving ideas, hollow metal doors instead of a fiberglass door. Fiberglass is less maintenance, and when we were out there, we talked to the maintenance guy and he was hoping we could put fiberglass doors in there. So that's what we spec initially. And then we also took the plywood out of the dryland storage area in the, dryland training in the storage area. So they came up with a deduct of $31,500, but with that insulation taken out, their number was, came down to $269,000. Okay? So what other things did we take out? We took out the painting of the plywood, because we're getting rid of the plywood in the dryland storage in the locker, in the storage area. We went from, instead of copper, we went to a plastic pipe. My engineers said that's what they do a lot nowadays, and it's fine. And then I put in a lot, so we had in-floor heat in this whole job because that's what you have out there now. But it's expensive to put in, so we felt we can't afford that. So talked to my engineers and he said, I can just put like a unit heater in there, and so that would save a lot of money. So I went back to the HVAC contractor and I said, if we just put a unit heater and got rid of the in-floor heat, what would we save? And he said $30,000. My opinion, that's not enough. And I told him that, I said, you know, I think we're going to have to rebid the HVAC because I don't think we're getting what it's worth. So. So that's what we came up with, value engineering. So you look on the totals on the bottom, so the subtotals of all the bids were $1,456,000. Our design fees, $87,000. Civil design, $92,800. CM fees, that's our profit and overhead. I took off a little bit of money on there because we're over budget. So from what my, the contract was, general conditions, $148,000. So the subtotal was $1.9. Bond savings, we require that all the bidders, it's a state statute that you provide a bond with your bid. So if you see that column over there, the performance bond, the third from the right-hand column, that's what the contractors had in there, the total of $15,955,000. Keller, because we're a big company and we're financially strong, we can bond this whole project for, less than all the individuals. So there would be a savings of $35,99 there. Tax savings, we make the contractors put tax in their, in their bid, even though you are tax exempt. Reason we do that is, on bid date, some guys put tax in, some don't. So we say, everybody put it in and we'll take it out before we issue a contract. So that's where that $31,000 came off, the bid number. Builders' risk insurance, because we're over budget again, I got approval to eliminate our builders' risk insurance. That would have been about a $9,000 cost if we would have had that in there. So we're trying to help out a little bit. So the project total is $18,650,000. Then the alternate one, which was the athletic flooring, I took that out of, that's taking out of the dryland training. Trying to save money, so the athletic flooring is everywhere else except the dryland training in the storage room. So the project total with value engineering was $17,950,000. And then you add the, or take the credit alternate. So the project cost as we bid it, and as it sits today, is $1,789,292.94. Any questions, please?
I do. You've got here that has a no bid, are you going to back out to rebid that?
The no bid on the, I put an allowance, are you talking the resinous flooring?
A bid five on this year.
Yes, yeah, we just put an allowance, I figured you want to know what, nobody gave us a bid that day. So I had my estimating department say, what if Keller would bid it, what's that, what's that cost of that resinous flooring? And he said $1,900. So I put that in there, we still have to get a bid for that, but I wanted you to know what your total cost would be. So it's an allowance that's included in the number.
And what, we had, it was initially around a million is what we were looking at?
Yeah, we had nine to, I think it was $1.1 million, somewhere in there, yeah, so, big difference.
Yeah.
Embarrassing. Again, we don't put the numbers on the bids, there's a lot of things that happened, you know, it's just, it's the days we're living in right now.
I would make the recommendation that we send this back to Park and Recs to design down.
You want to probably reject the bids.
Okay, I would make the motion to reject the bids.
What's that, Mike?
Second.
You can. I'm sorry, I jumped in, I was summing discussion.
Yeah.
So we can, 60 days, accept these bids. But obviously, we're way outside of the parameters that we initially started with. So it was going to be staff's recommendation to exactly, or at least close to what you said, send it back to Parks and Rec, deny the bids, and have them look at a redesign or additional funding opportunities through Parks and Rec Commission.
I have a question for Mr. K.
Yes, sir.
What's the potential for rebuilding a total project with minimal redesign that would possibly come in much more competitively at a later date? What timeframe would you look at?
We'd recommend that this be bid in November. That's, contractors don't have their work load up for the following year yet in place. So to us, our experience, that is an optimum time to bid. November, December, or January, those three months, if you can bid it in that timeframe, would be the best time to bid it.
Do you feasibly see a 40% reduction in bid?
No.
Exactly, so, I mean, I think, rather than waiting till November, I think we, as a, my recommendation, going back to the Parks Commission, is to take it to the hockey organization and say, we need to revamp this and revisit this because I don't, I don't see bids dropping by $600,000.
No, what we thought is, talking with Joe, is possibly get rid of the dryland training, get rid of the storage room, and that could possibly save $300,000, but that's still a far cry from where you need to be.
But is that something we really want to take out completely, you know?
Yeah, it'll be up to the hockey and Parks Board to send it back and see what they can live with.
Well, but I think it's, I think it's one of those things where we've, we've, as a city, we've said, what's the feasibility from an economic investment standpoint? And at this point in time, it's not for us to adjust. Because we've pretty much laid it out there that this is what we can afford, and.
So sending it back to the park for.
Do we just have mics on? Do you guys hear your mic on down?
Yes. I kind of see what they can do too. Yeah.
Yeah, because we talked about taking it back to Park Board, dissecting it there, work with the hockey group, and then possibly having those facilities as an alternate bid. There's all one package here, so we can see what to bid for the necessity, the locker rooms, the upgraded showers, the facilities, what you need for the facility, and then the other rooms that are open areas for that. So we'll dissect that at the Park Board, work with hockey group, and then also see if there's any other funding out there that can help with this project too.
One thing is, if the economy goes into a recession, some of the construction costs, material-wise, may go down significantly.
Yeah, that, that very well could happen.
Let's not use that word.
It's a possibility.
I know. Any other questions or comments? All right, so Mike, your motion was to reject the bids and send it back to Parks and Recreation Board, and then the second one by Richard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
All a question for probably Kirk or Molly. How does this affect our pending bond issue?
Well, let all this go back to the drawing board. So Kirk had said, let's make lemonade out of lemons, so that would be an opportunity if we needed it, to either take that portion out, or if the council wanted to fund more, we could look at that as well.
All right, moving on to the City Clerk section of reports, we have Agenda Item 3, the City Clerk Monthly Report.
Good evening, everyone. So we had the spring election, had a really good turnout, 41% of registered voters at that election, so we were quite busy, with a total of 1,929 voters. So one big thing, and this is all in my written report, but I am working with, right now, the police department on a potential change to our voting place, our actual polling place, to change it from the garage over here to the police department. The police department conference room is slightly smaller, but it will be able to accommodate all but a presidential election, which we're thinking we might not be able to accommodate here at the fire station anyways, that we would need to go back onto Rec Park for that. So we are kind of talking about it and visualizing what it might look like. Just to let you guys know that, we'll come before you to vote on that, we have to have council approval to create a new polling place. So more to come on that, we're very excited about it, it's clean, it's got, you know, the generator in there, you've got the, you know, the electrical is just so nice for our Badger books, it keeps everything temperature-controlled for our pole workers. It's just, plus there's a good flow of, where people can come in the one door and then go out the other, instead of coming in and out the same door, which just seems to look a little better for people flow, so. That will come before you likely over the next couple of months. We are going through alcohol and tobacco and coin operating machines and all the licensing that we do annually, so you will see some of that coming in front of you over the next couple of months as well. And then one thing for everyone, because you know, sometimes I do have council people who fill out address applications with the city for like historical preservation maybe, or you know, maybe another committee or commission. They are due back to the clerk's office by noon on May 10th, so if you need a copy, a blank copy of the application, make sure you get with me and I'll get you one. We don't have the Thomas B. Earl ones just yet, I contacted the school district and she said they'll be available soon. So I will let you know as soon as we get those ones. Does anyone have any question? Yes.
What about no fire station as a potential polling place?
I'm willing to listen to any kind of recommendation or potential possibility. I certainly wasn't going to assume or assert myself into the new building anyway, but you know, anything is a possibility. But we are definitely looking for something, you know, a little cleaner, something with better flow, that's more handicap accessible. I don't have to worry about grates in the floor, covering them with duct tape every time we have an election. And I mean, we have those lumps in there, and I had public works came in and put cones up for me, and people then they tripped over the cones. I mean, it just couldn't, can't win. So anything that can help with handicap accessibility and people flow and, you know, taking good care of our pole workers and having it be. One other thing about the police department that I can't stress enough is, it just is safer, you know, a little bit because you're in a police station. So I think just in this day and age, it feels a little bit safer to be somewhere like, like that, where you're surrounded by law enforcement. So it would be a good idea, in my heart anyway, that's how I feel, but obviously, that would be your decision. So I have thought about that, yes, but I haven't.
I have thought about that, yes, but I haven't.
Show off the new building.
I actually thought of that. My concern would be traffic flow if there was an emergency.
It's the layout of the building is really not designed for full through traffic.
Yeah, well, but with eighteen garages, I mean, they're getting pretty full.
Are you talking about the police department or the safety building?
The whole of the safety building, not the fires. Other than the garage area, the garage area, you're gonna have the same problems you've got in the present fire station, grades and drainage.
Yeah, the wash bay, great big flow.
They can just drive through.
The grates, yeah, drive through.
Drive through voting.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Moving on to the treasure. We have agenda item four, the April treasures of the department.
Good evening. Um, department heads, we've been working together to look at our five year capital plan. Uh, we had a pretty solid plan in place through 2024 and then it kind of drops off. So as part of the preparation for our bonding, uh, we've been working on that. We will be working with elders to come up with something that would be presented for your approval in the months to come. Debt service, we paid off some more debt. Twenty thirteen A, which was originally taken out to pay for street projects, was paid off on April first. Uh, twenty twenty one A, B, and C, as well as twenty twenty A are all due May first. So that's a big one. Um, our twenty twenty two A payment is over a million dollars in itself. That's our new EMS building and last year's borrowing. So that's a substantial payment. It'll be good to get it done. Um, and then in my office, it's just a very busy month for reporting. Um, and I've listed kind of the reports that I have due by May first. So busy working on getting those all ready to be filed with the respective oversight boards. Uh, does anyone have any questions on my report? Then I'll present the March thirty first, twenty twenty three cash investments for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion to approve by Mike and a second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the senior executive team. We have agenda item six, the monthly SET report.
Quite a few vacations, um, and a lot of training with, um, SET team this month. But a couple of the highlights that we do have are we reached out to Manawal Associates to start some negotiations with a couple of properties that we identified for housing developments. We will keep you posted as those, uh, negotiations unfold. Shane's department, he had substantial upgrade projects at Walmart, eleven million dollars. The building permit fees were in excess of forty-six thousand. I believe that he has reached or exceeded the building permit fees already this year from last year. So he's pretty excited about that. We were able to attend a couple of ribbon cutting or one ribbon cutting at Kikapu Roofing, just right outside of town, south of town. And Shane did also assist the village hustler with some zoning issues, uh, some guidance that he offered them. And I did, uh, attended the Roll Water Association Conference in McCross. Do you have any questions from SET?
On these housing projects, are they single family homes primarily or we don't think they have multifamily or a combination?
I believe we would follow what I remember from the report that they came up with. And I think that was a mix of not only single family, but multifamily and even some of those larger, maybe not the fifty-two unit large, but larger units.
How many total, how many units you're looking at?
That's really going to be dependent upon the parcel that we find and hopefully negotiate and get the infrastructure to what we can afford. Um, a lot of, a lot of what ifs at this time. Um, and maybe we go into entering an agreement that we have some options down the road for first rate refusals or, or only develop parcel or a portion of the parcel. Just a lot of, a lot of scenarios. I think that's why we reached out to Van the Wall. I think they can offer us a lot better, um, guidance from what they've seen in larger communities, smaller communities. They're very versatile and can offer us a lot of advice on those negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to parks and recreation. We have agenda item number seven, Toma Parks Recreation Program. Joe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Parks Department, we're busy getting ready for the spring, summer last week with the parks busy. If you've been around town and getting the bathrooms ready to go. And then today they're putting heaters in the bathroom to make sure pipes don't freeze. So that's just the nature of the beast this time of year. So I'm just getting excited here. Hopefully this gets out of here and we could do, we got some groups coming in for some park cleanups next week and, um, Arbor Day and Earth Day coming up here. So get some things cleaned up and get ready for the spring. Uh, um, we had had some inquiries about, uh, for jobs. We'll get that out this week. I was gone last week on vacation. Still gotta get caught up on getting some things posted for summer employment, but we're working hard on our pool staff and just about finalize with our pool schedule. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have all our summer pool schedules out to the public and then just waiting here back for some trainings to what they will open the pools. So I completed my, uh, AFO certification two weeks ago for aquatic facility operations. So we should be good to go for another five years for that. And then just listed in there is also what's happening at Rec Park. Uh, still busy with rentals, youth gymnastics and, uh, Wisconsin Blue Devils, uh, hockey out there practicing on a nightly, nightly basis with that. So, um, if the weather breaks here, we are scheduled to erect our replacement playground at Veterans Park. Uh, next Wednesday we'll be doing that, uh, with, uh, individuals from Lee Recreation and then our park staff. It'd be about a day and a half. So we'll be busy doing that out at Veterans Park. We removed that and we'll be using, um, park improvement fund for that at the park board a year or so approved for that. So that'll be a nice addition because soccer is starting up out there for the youth programs and it'd be nice to have a new playground out at Veterans Park. So any other questions, concerns? Winnebago is still, um, moving slowly, but hopefully, uh, May first should be hopefully wrapped up. We were supposed to start pouring the concrete plaza today, but obviously that didn't get accomplished. So we're still working with the conditions for that. So any questions or concerns? All right, thank you.
How's the progress going out at, uh, Badger Five?
Um, we should have our specs and bid documents ready by the end of this month is what they, they've, they've told me. So, um, on the bathrooms and all that. So hopefully, you know, by a month, we'll have a bid tabulation with that and then we can kind of coincide that with, you know, hockey and everything. So hopefully things start falling to pieces with that. So just taking a little time to get all the final specs and bid documents ready to go. So.
I know that Gurkey's been out there prepping that land. I mean, it's amazing what they're doing.
Yeah, we've run a lot of fill. That was part of the, you know, the donation and other for mediation of our site, but, uh, we have to get the bids for the other part, you know, public bids and the specs and all that.
It's starting to come together.
Starting to move a lot of dirt. So hopefully we can get, get going on that as well. So. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Moving on to public works and utilities. We have agenda item number eight, Public Works Utilities Director Report. Kirk?
Well, I think how things have changed since we wrote this with the snow, but we still are working on a large amount of patching of potholes. We did get our air compressor. We were intended to use that for crack ceiling operations coming up, but obviously with the snow, it's gonna, um, delay that. We did get the remaining traffic light poles on my Superior changed out. Uh, if you noticed, they're all the same color now, similar to the streetlights. And hear a lot of good comments about that and the aesthetics that it provided. Uh, we did get, uh, almost a week's worth of, um, three or four guys daily out at the rodeo, um, arena. Uh, and we're building a fence out there. And, uh, so that's gonna be quite an asset when it's done. I do encourage you to go out there and look at that. Uh, it's gonna be quite a, quite a facility. Um, if you remember, uh, in one of our goals, we ordered a large amount of, uh, street signs and we're focusing on the east side of Superior Avenue, uh, up and down that area. And, uh, most of those signs we've got replaced. I think there are a few still missing or need to go up yet, but, uh, that's been our concentration. A lot of those were faded, missing, um, various, uh, housekeeping items for that. And, uh, along with that, we're also going around and straightening up the post, trying to make everything look aesthetically appealing. So doing a, doing a pretty good job on that. Two guys pretty much work on that and filling potholes pretty much constantly. Uh, one thing we did get, uh, done, uh, when I wrote this was the boat ramp. I believe we got the boat dock in. We had to make a connection to our new ramp and, and facilitate that boat dock. And, uh, everybody was really getting the itch to use it. I'm sure it slowed down a little bit now with the snow again, but, uh, are making some headway in, in the parks. Uh, again, sewer department, uh, we, the road bans were coming off today. Uh, we would like to haul out that sludge as soon as possible, but that is delayed again also. Um, and again, the water department, uh, we wanted to start a flushing program today. Uh, we delayed that obviously because of the snow impacting the gutters and the water that we would create and the issues out there. So soon to, soon to take off again. Uh, watch our Facebook page. And, uh, last item was, uh, next late committee meeting is May eighteenth is scheduled for. Any questions?
Did, uh, you do any, um, marking of eggs for yeast control or not?
Um, I believe Joe could answer that better than me. Joe, do you know where we're at for geese, um, management program?
Yeah, we are following, uh, our permit and following procedures as permitted by the DNR. So.
Okay. I don't know. One of the suggestions was, um, oiling eggs. I don't know if you're doing any of that or not.
Uh, we're doing the same management program that we, uh, got approved last year through the, through the DNR program. So.
Okay. Was egg, egg oiling part of that program?
Uh, there's about five or six different things that you can do for, uh, mobilization or, uh, for the nesting and so forth. So it's, it's currently going, going well. So. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, moving on to the police department. We have agenda item number nine, March twenty twenty three, Police Department Monthly Report. Chief?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, recent hiring process was a success. We've extended a, uh, offer of employment to a young man by the name of Cody Burks. He, uh, is from the Karrad area, uh, already has the police academy. He starts with us April thirtieth. Uh, Ethan Patterson continues to do well in the academy. Again, he graduates early June and we'll jump right into our field training process. So as of April thirtieth, we will be full staff. Um, everybody won't be on the road till fallish, but, uh, it's a good start for us. And, uh, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Rhonda Copeland, our administrative assistant. Uh, for the past eighteen months, she's been in the, uh, University of Wisconsin Certified Public Manager course, and she recently graduated on Friday. So, uh, we're a big proponent of education and training. And, um, I'm a certified public manager. Rhonda is now one. The assistant chief is in the command college. He will be one, uh, in June and then we'll get the lieutenant in there as well. So it's a good course. Talks about budgeting, policies, a lot of personnel stuff. So great management course at the University of Wisconsin. Our records management, uh, system project is coming along and scheduled. It'll be completed in, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the UTV, uh, that we ordered, um, is here. Uh, be, or here being in, at the dealership, it'll be delivered tomorrow. So once that comes in, we'll get it, uh, up and get it outfitted and get it ready for the summer with all the events and, and stuff. Uh, if you guys recall, uh, we were approved for two hybrid squad cars, uh, for twenty twenty-three. We want to move, uh, in that direction. Unfortunately, one of them is not going to be available to us. One we hope will be, uh, the second one is probably gonna have to be a traditional gas powered vehicle. Uh, we'll continue with our plan moving forward with, um, hybrid vehicles, but it's supply chain issues. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. Uh, there's agencies that have many vehicles on order and you just get a phone call and they say, we don't have them for you and you, you just, you move on. So, uh, we're doing what we can with that. Gas powered are a little bit cheaper. Um, so it wouldn't be an issue with cost. Uh, time of year, we're getting, uh, traffic complaints, uh, usually in the Bow Street area, La Grange area, North Glendale area. We're putting extra officers when in there, what we refer to as un, unobligated time in those areas, uh, running traffic. We have a unit called a, a metro account, which I'm sure none of you know what it is, but it, uh, goes across the street with rubber tubes. You're running across those. What it does is accounts vehicles and it, uh, gives you reading on, on speed on those vehicles. So we're gonna collect data, uh, see how big of an issue it truly is, and then we'll look at what we can do. I'll speak with Kirk on that. Um, it costs money, but, uh, digital signage, the, uh, the radar flashing lights, you know what I mean? Where it pops up your speed. We got a couple in town. Uh, those are pretty effective. Um, so we'll, we'll see. Uh, but those areas are notorious for, for trouble spots for us. Um, I'd like to thank John and Donna Shuck. Uh, if you guys recall last, uh, month, John was here and we were talking about those, uh, portable fire suppression devices, uh, that we use at fires. And I sat down and, and he just told me that he wanted to donate, uh, one. They're twelve hundred dollars. And the next morning he was at the police department, uh, with a check. And so now we have another one. So very generous of him and his wife Donna. So we appreciate it. And I will be on vacation next week. So a little break for me. Any questions at all?
Is there a possibility that we could look at the, um, intersection of Jackson and Butts and possibly change that signage so that it would be?
I think that's more of a DPW question. I, I think, cause it's backwards, right? Everyone that goes to it for the first time, they're like, what, what is this? I think it was because of TMH and the ambulances coming through. I think that was the reason. I think we can change that, but I think it's gonna cause a lot of chaos for people that have been driving to that intersection for.
For years.
For years and years and years.
I was kind of thinking that maybe, uh, coming up, uh, northbound on Butts, that could be, uh, play turn no stop. Cause you got the, that traffic coming up Jackson and going south on Butts is not stop now.
Right. So I always thought that intersection should be a three-way stop to be completely honest, because it's just, it's backwards. Um, but yeah, that's more of a Kirk conversation than a Scott conversation.
Comments to that? Uh, we reached out to the Toma School District with the busing and they prefer to be kept the same way as it is. And that's where we stood with that.
I think the, I think the biggest concern with that, um, considering that was where I got my first speeding ticket in nineteen eighty-four.
First.
The only one I actually sped on. Uh, but I think the concern with that and why we would want to leave it is that if you go out to the fairgrounds, if you took out those stop signs, that entire length of Butts Avenue, there would be no stop sign then. You wouldn't hit another stop sign. If you just kept following the road, you wouldn't hit it until you got up to highway twenty-one. Because if you took those stop signs out now, that's a kind of a progressive, you know, people are in a hurry.
Well, the question I have is, if, as far as a person coming northbound on Butts, making a right, uh, right turn onto Jackson, there really isn't no reason to stop because the traffic coming up Jackson and going south on Butts is already going through. But if you're gonna go across to go north on Butts, past the lake, you'd still have your stop sign.
Jeff, I hear you. I mean, sure, that, that makes sense. Just continued flow. May help, uh, at the end of the day with school, you know, the young people, uh, leading Toma High School are going that way down Butts.
I can see why the school district would want the stop sign there for, for their buses.
Right.
Kind of going to the school in the mornings and the afternoons. They don't have to stop. If you put a three-way, they'd have to stop too.
True.
While we're on the topic for interesting intersections, I might as well bring it up. I did once. Don't know who, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's public works, but I'm not sure who we're talking about it. If you are coming, if you're from out of town, you go to the BP gas station right next to the airport and you want to get back on the interstate and go again, probably I would say at least twice a day. If I'm outside, all afternoon by the airport. People pull out of the BP gas station on the entrance that's on the, um, on the highway twelve sixteen, not on the sign. But if you pull out on highway twelve sixteen and they turn left and they go through the intersection and they drive down the wrong side of the road, so they get to the next available chance to get on the right side of the road. And usually there's a lot of BP and stuff. That's why it gets my attention.
Sure.
And they get back over. So I did call the state council and said, hey, you know, maybe we could fix that. You know, put up an extra sign there when you're leaving the BP gas sta- gas station parking lot. And an extra sign was put up at my driveway for me. But I told them to know that I'm not supposed to fall out of the runway. So, so if people would want to use that sign and just move it down the road.
Right, right.
But I'm not sure who.
The DOT, the DOT is big on you just move the sign wherever you want.
Yeah, but it's a state highway. It's a state highway. So I'm not sure who's over that highway sixteen, you know? So, but that is.
Yeah, that would follow the DOT.
I've actually helped an elderly gentleman who was stopped on the side of the road, confused, didn't know what was going on. And there's been some accidents down there before. It's kind of weird when I turn to go into my driveway and I actually always look. When you do want to U-turn to go back to my driveway, I always look because people do come down the wrong side of the highway there.
Really?
Usually when they leave the gas station. They're just not familiar.
Yeah.
With the crown of the road, you don't realize you're on the wrong side of the road.
Yeah, that's the first part of that.
Yeah.
So you're saying they come out on.
Sixteen.
On Clifton and they're taking a left?
From the gas station.
They're, they're going down to sign and then?
Not, not the sign. They don't turn on sign at all. They just pull out.
They're coming down where sign, where sign would be.
Where the sign intersection is.
Yeah.
They go right through that intersection on the wrong side of the road and they don't really realize they're on the wrong side of the road until they get past Old Dominion and then right by the motel is where they get over.
Wow. And how many times do you see this?
Usually on like a weekend, usually once or twice a day. You hear some people. It's just when people go get gas from out of town and then they get back on the interstate.
Okay.
It's just weird. Just I don't know if there's ever sign they could put there just to get someone's attention. So I did call the state and then they put up a sign like right across from my driveway. So it's one way.
Task failed successfully, huh?
That's okay. It's a weird one.
Any other intersections? All right. Any questions before we move on to the next one?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be here for a while.
Okay. Uh, moving to the general section of the agenda. We have agenda item ten, budget amendment transferring six thousand dollars from account zero one four eight nine zero zero to account zero one five two one zero 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 three four zero zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve that Richard and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eleven, approval for Officer Blackhawk and Officer Riegel to attend K-9 training in Beaton, Ontario, Canada in the fall of twenty twenty-three.
Next question to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Nellie and a second by John. Any discussion? Chiefs, anything you want to add on that one?
Um, no. It's a twelve hour drive, but it's necessary. Um, it's the standard kennel in our area. Just I need approval from the council due to our city policy manual.
All right. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving to agenda item twelve, temporary class B license and temporary class B license application by Queen of the Apostles to sell fermented malt beverages and wine at its technology dinner fundraiser on May sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Nellie. Any discussion?
I could real quick. I just wanna let you guys know that it's not a typo when you see class B and class B. There is a difference between them. So a class B, uh, license is, means B for beer, which means you're selling it and people are drinking it at the event. Um, A is like a classy, it's like a liquor store where you take it to drink it at home. But the difference between the quotes, a B, um, is a smaller one, which is for beer, so just beer. And if it's class B and both of them in the quotes, that means it's all liquor and wine or beer and wine. It's not just a, if it's a small amount of liquor or a small amount of alcohol, it's in the smaller quotes, but if you're selling more, it's a liquor.
I, I always wondered that. It took me like a year of being a clerk before I figured out what it meant, but, uh, just so you know, that's why it's listed on there. Just a little information for you tonight. Thank you.
So why would they do it that way?
I don't know.
Who was the second one?
Uh, was John and Nellie first? Was it Dan and Nellie?
Nellie.
Yeah, Nellie. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item thirteen, temporary class B, that's just the B with the quotes, license application by PFW Post thirteen eighty-two to sell fermented malt beverages at its chicken queue on May sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by John and a second by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item fourteen, temporary class B license application by Monroe County Tabard League to sell fermented malt beverages at Monroe County Tabard League Pool Tournament on January twelfth to the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Richard and a second by Nellie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item fifteen, approval of airport hangar lease between Matthew Purdy and the city of Toma. Approval of airport hangar lease between Matthew Purdy and the City of Toma.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, a second by Richard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to agenda sixteen, resolution for the payment of monthly bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Dean. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item seventeen. Ordinance repealing section twenty-eight dash eighty-two, carrying dangerous weapon and amending section forty-four dash one eighty-one. Subsection one, operation of ATVs and UTVs of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Richard. A second.
Second.
Second by John. Chief, you want to talk about this one a little bit?
I can. We have an ordinance that, we're just cleaning up a little bit of ordinance issues. Penny and I. Carrying a dangerous weapon revolves around knives, in particular switchblades, everything we used to use it for. A bill in two thousand fifteen, a Wisconsin Assembly Bill. They, they got rid of all restrictions on knives. Only people that cannot carry a concealed knife in the state of Wisconsin are, are felons, people that can't possess firearms. So our ordinance is in conflict with, with the law. So that's why the recommendation to repeal that. And the, the operation of ATV, UTV. It's lawful in the city at this point in time to operate from six, eight to ten P. Or we've had a few requests to move that from five, eight to ten P. There are people that want their UTVs to commute in the, I guess, most, most UTVs you see in the summertime. By doing, by, by dropping it to five A M, that would allow lawful operation of a UTV. So that's the purpose of that. And then, right now, there is no exemption for law enforcement personnel, fire, EMS, maintenance workers to operate a UTV past ten P M. So we're looking to add an exemption. Tractor pull, some kind of an emergency out on you know, one of the trails, you know, at two A M, this would lawfully allow us. I mean, if I'm being honest, we're going to take it anyway. But this would allow the exemption for us, for ordinance.
I do have a question about down the, the knife.
Sure.
So you are, wait, is it going to be appealed, did you say?
Repealed. The ordinance is just going to, we're going to get rid of it.
What is that for officers that have to stop someone and has those kind of weapons?
It's lawful. They can carry them.
That's my concern.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's, yeah, you bet. You bet.
Okay.
But yeah, the, the state of Wisconsin has made it, made it legal.
Too bad.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, so as a reminder, these were approved, or the motion is to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Agenda item eighteen. Final resolution authorizing public improvement and levying special assessments against benefited properties in Toma, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by John to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right before we adjourn, I just want to say on a personal note, this is my last meeting before Travis takes my spot tomorrow. So I just wanted to say how much of an honor and a privilege it's been to serve on the city council with you all. And to represent the people of District One. It's a thankless job sometimes, but I've learned a little bit from each of you. And I also want to say to the city employees and the department heads that thank you for your service. It's hard when the people in the seats can change every year, but it's the only reason the city works as well as it does is because of the proficiency and the skill that you guys possess. So I look forward, I wish Travis good luck, and I look forward to be a fan of city council tomorrow and seeing where you guys go from here. So with that. Thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Dean and a second by Nellie to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As of
Nay.
seven twenty-five, we are adjourned.
I wanted to give you one meeting. Somebody said nay to adjourn.
Do you really want me to?
No.
Aye, Travis Sholz.
Having been elected to the office of
Having been elected to the office of
All the person in District Five.
All the person in District One.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations, all of you.
It is six thirty. I'll call a meeting to order. We will start with, with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Travis Sholz.
Here.
Richard Yerington.
Present.
Sean Zbinski. John Glenn.
Here.
Nicole Harp.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer. Nellie Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson.
Here. Thank you. Is there anyone desiring to appear before the council at this time? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. And we will remind you that we have a three-minute time limit on presentations before the council.
I have one paragraph.
Well, read, read slowly. You've got three minutes.
Joanne Klunkert, ten twenty-three Hollister Avenue, Toma, Wisconsin. Tonight, as you are sworn in to serve on the city council, I want to remind you that you're an elected official representing a group of constituents in your wards. It is often too easy to vote with your voice. But remember, if any of your constituents have contacted you, it is their voice that needs to be heard. Just a kind reminder and have a good turn.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to appear before the council? Okay, thank you. Move on to the mayor's report. First of all, I'd like to give a big shout out to our Special Olympics basketball team for placing third at the state basketball tournament this past weekend. Had an absolutely fantastic season. I think they all slept well on Sunday night after three big games over the course of the weekend. And I think Joanne did a nice job of introing for us, especially with the, the members here that it's imperative that all of us as members of the council, that we do have lives outside of here. But that if we are not going to be able to be at a meeting, that we make sure that we alert someone. Because again, life does happen and we just need to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row as regards quorums and such, because that is, that's not really our call, it's state statute call on what we have to have. But again, I'd like to thank those that have served up to this point in time. We wouldn't be where we are as a city and growing the way we are if we didn't have the people that were, were sitting in the seats that you're sitting in. Welcome, Nicole. Welcome back, Travis. Good to have you here. With that, we will move on to public safety. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, everyone. Try to be short and sweet here. I know we've got a long agenda this evening. Welcome back, Travis and Nicole. Welcome aboard. Firewise, we had two structure fires in March. The first was on March fifteenth at three thirteen West Elizabeth Street. It was a kitchen fire, pretty much contained to the kitchen area, kitchen cabinets. We were able to go in and quickly extinguish that fire. The second call was on March fifteenth at five nineteen Glendale Avenue. Again, fire crews were able to make a, a quick entry on the main level of the home and, and put that fire out. So no, no injuries reported either of those. So I'll give you a quick building update. Things continue to move along. If you've been by there. Exterior facade continues with the, the brick and mortar work. We're ready to pour concrete curbs and approaches, got some of it done. And then, of course, Mother Nature had to play its course here, so it probably backed us up here a couple of weeks. But hopefully we get back on track next week. Asphalt is slated to be laid down in the middle of May, so again, weather pendant. Flooring is in progress. Tile floors are almost all done. Started carpet on yesterday, so that's moving along real quickly. Ceiling tiles will be, ceiling tiles are being put into place. The sprinkler system was hydrotested yesterday and that's all up and running. Low voltage, all the alarm systems and things like that. All the networking is being worked on currently. Cabinetry is in process. The fire gear lockers actually started today. Landscaping here, we're going to be looking at in, in a couple of weeks. Just as a reminder, we took that out of the bid and we're going to be doing that all on our own. So just to save some money. Other than that, we're hoping for some good weather so we can anticipate an early June move-in. So that's the plan with the building. EMS-wise, continued to be busy with two hundred fifty-two calls last month. Recently filled our vacant full-time position with Dylan Evenson. He's doing a great job so far. He started here a couple of weeks ago. We also hired a, another part-time EMT, Mara Gode. So we're at full staff, got a great part-time crew right now. And we're always looking for more part-time help if there's anybody out there. Our transfer work, we're right in that mid ninety percentile, so right where we want to be, continue to get all the transfers out that we can. Other than that, as I mentioned last month, the Medicare revalidation is done. And now we're working on the Medicare ground ambulance data information that has to be done by the end of May. That's all ground ambulance services in the United States has to go through this great big long survey that takes months and months and months of data. And again, I thank the treasurer and her department for getting us all the, the data that we needed for all the financing and things like that. So a lot of work put into this by a lot of people. So other than that, emergency management wise, proud to say that the new emergency siren is up on the new Glendale site. That has been down since the December fifteenth storm of twenty twenty-one, so when it got struck by lightning at the North Side Fire Station. So our new sirens up and is operational and ready for summer. So other than that, does anybody have any questions?
I, I just want to say that I'm glad to see the transfer denied down quite a bit. That's good to see.
Yep. Again, if you ever want to go over any of that data, you know, the biggest, the, the biggest area where you're going to see it being denied is the outline hospitals. We take care of our hospitals, the VA, Toma Health. And if you see, usually see where they're declined, it's usually when it's Hillsborough, Baroka, Black River Falls, Mount Vernon. Those outline hospitals are the ones that we usually have the decline. We distracted for our purposes.
Yeah, it's good to see that.
Tim, I just want to make sure you thank your EMS staff. So I got to experience a transfer and it was not very much fun, but it was confidence expiring, inspiring because they were really calm and I wasn't because there was a problem, you know? So it's, it was the first time I got to ride in an ambulance and thank you for the birthday present.
And I guarantee you, you're going to tell me they all need new shocks, right? That's how they, that's how they ride.
That's okay though. I was, I was pretty happy. I just said, is my heart doing that? He goes, no, sometimes it's the bumps and I'm like no, thank you. Make sure you pay for it. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the, the city, the council, you know, it's one of those things where sometimes we want to know what time it is and sometimes we want to know how the clock works. As to the fires last week. I want to commend you and thank you for keeping me updated and abreast of everything that was going on. You know, yours is a difficult task. You still have a city to take care of. You still have people in this area that have to be taken care of and to be able to assist while still keeping an eye on what's happening in this area, you should be very, very proud. I'm proud of you guys as, as a service and please pass on a thank you on behalf of myself and the council and the outlying areas for all the help you guys gave in this last week.
I will do that. We did have, we did have a chief over in I'm drawing a blank. The Nacida area for that fire and then we had several crews up in the, the Black River for two days. And we did give our UTV one heck of a good workout, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. We're going to do a little flip-flop here. Pamela has to, she has a commitment that we're going to let her jump up here first. Oh, you guys can leg wrestle if you want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have my entire report in.
You're a little vertically challenged. That's right. Tina, Tina's going to make it go lower.
Okay, you have my report in your pack. It's my entire report. I'll just try to hit some highlights and answer any questions you might have. I put together a new graph, a new chart, so you can see the comparisons on the numbers. So for March twenty twenty-one, our participants at the senior center were six hundred and seventeen. In twenty twenty-two, it was one thousand three hundred and ninety. And this March, this year, it was two thousand three hundred and forty-nine. So it, it's trending in the right direction. And our volunteers for those same periods were, for twenty-one, volunteer opportunities filled were thirty-seven. For twenty twenty-two, it was one hundred and thirty-eight. And this March, it was two hundred and sixty-three. So that is also trending right. Any questions on that? Oh, we didn't take attendance before COVID. That was the result of COVID. And then the city administrator at the time said that he, he liked that and longed me to keep doing the numbers. So that's where that came from. We had our potluck on Good Friday because the meal site was closed. So we did a potluck. And we had no afternoon activities because we closed like the rest of the city at noon. And for not having bingo after, that afternoon, we still had nineteen people who took part in the potluck. That was pretty good. And it was good food. The basket weaving, we still have a sign up for May basket weaving class, if anyone is interested out there. I am willing to start a pals exercise class. If, I need six to twelve people to sign up. So I was going to start that yesterday, but I didn't have enough people. So I started last week the stand up and move more course. And that goes for four weeks. It's a behavior, we behavior, change our own behaviors in there, so we stand up more. And because you can exercise in the morning and if you sit at your desk all day or sit all evening watching TV, you've just erased every good you did by working out that morning. And that's regarding.
That's why I don't work out in the morning. I don't want to waste it.
That's regarding the possibilities of heart disease, diabetes and all of those things. So we offer that course. Traveling office hours. We are adding this month. The Toma Health Hospice and Palliative Care Program is doing traveling office hours at our place as well. So it's easier for people to access someone to help them. And so I'm pretty excited about that. And this week, this Thursday, is our volunteer appreciation social. And it's after bingo about three, three-thirty on Thursday. You're welcome to come. Some of the council are volunteers, so you're all welcome to come. I have a list in, in the report of all the volunteers from this last year to this year. I have a list in the report of all the volunteers from this last year to this year. So that's in there if you were interested in the names. Lots of volunteers. I'm proud of those volunteers. Can you tell? Next thing, I'm going down to the buildings and maintenance. Morgan Stanley is packing up today and tomorrow and turning over the keys to us. And I had a serious some people who are seriously looking at it, so we'll see what happens. And we're still looking to rent on the other side of us the old Phillips Pharmacy Building, so. This year, for the first time, we've had in the newsletter every month the schedule of people can rent the Senior Center for like a family reunion or something like that. And we've had that in there for a while. Well, April 1st, from 9:00 to 5:00, it was a Saturday, a family rented it for a family gathering. And it worked out well for us, and it worked out very well for them. I also have another family that has rented it out for a date in November, around Thanksgiving, not Thanksgiving, but around then. So that's the start of another venture that we're doing. Any questions?
How much is it to rent it?
Well, just like with parks, Parks and Rec, it's different depending on whether you're a resident in the city or not. I also have, they've been set for a long time. The I'm trying to figure out where I have it in here right now. It's something like off the top of my head.
I think Nicole found it.
You found it, yeah. So we have public, like if an organization that raises money for the community comes in, then that most likely will be free. But if it's a private, like a private family reunion or something, they have to pay. And there's residents, city resident versus non-city resident. There's also client versus non-client because clients are used to our facility and are more apt to take better care of it as far as janitoring and cleaning up after them, whereas non-clients may not be. They could be, but they may not be. More training has to be done there for them. So it's in there, and that was approved a number of years ago by the council. I went through the council for that. Any other questions?
Thanks, Pamela.
Thank you.
So I think we'll skip Irma again. I'm kidding. We'll move on to the library. Ms. Irma. You'll probably want to move the microphone back up.
Because I'm tall. You don't want to skip the most fun part of the city.
That's very true.
It's incredibly fun. Hey. Hi, Nicole. So, good evening. March eBooks 2027 Physical Checkouts, 5,175. You'll notice those numbers are going up for a total of 7,202. Our biggest news this month, which I'm pretty sure most of you are aware of, is our new sign in front of the library. We will be receiving training on that, so the sky's limit. Who knows what will be up there? We're going to use it to promote the library and also to promote the community. In our children's department, the children's librarian is revamping the nonfiction area. He researched other library systems to see what new nonfiction they've been getting. And he found about 250 books that would be beneficial for our collection. So for every month, for the rest of the year, he'll be ordering between 20 and 25 books and using them to replace the books that we have that are outdated. He's also combining the teen fiction and the teen nonfiction. Currently, the nonfiction, the teens and the children's is together. So we're going to just have all of our teen books in one area. So working on that. The adult department, I spoke about the Hot Reads for Home Months program that we had going on. We had 930 entries in that. Next week, the week we've all been waiting for. Well, maybe not you, but libraries. It's National Library Week. So let the excitement begin. We are going to have celebrations and fun all week. We don't know what that will look like, but if you stop by, you will know.
Is your week completely booked?
That was good. That was really good. That actually was really, really good. I'm going to say that at work. We are going to have cupcakes on next Thursday to stop by. Even those of you that don't come by, stop by and get a cupcake, and maybe we can interest you in a book or two. So, yeah, next week. New books in the adult department. Hello, Sleep: The Science and the Art of Overcoming Insomnia.
Sign me up. I need that book.
Black Holes: The Key to Understanding the Universe. The Emotional Life of Teenagers. I could have used that.
The Apple Perks will be borrowing that book on.
Starter Vegetable Gardens: 24 Plans for Small Gardens. And Forever Young: The Secrets to Living Your Longest, Healthiest Life. That's a little late for some of us, but maybe some of you could use it.
Could use that, right?
This Thursday at 5:30, we'll be showing the movie. I told you last time, so I'm telling you again. But it's this Thursday, we're going to show A Man Called Otto. And that's based on a book. My guess is the book is better, but I don't know because I haven't seen the movie. But I will let you know next time. A Man Called Otto, 5:30 this Thursday. We have popcorn. We have comfortable chairs.
The movie's fantastic. The movie is fantastic.
But have you read the book? I don't answer. Don't answer.
Does it count if I meant to?
For you, yes. Next month, we're going to show Broker. And that's a film about two men who sell babies to rich couples. Check out our website to know what's going on, tomapubliclibrary.org, or you can look at our sign. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for me? Comments? Thank you. Happy National Library Week, everyone.
Thank you, Irma. Planning and building inspection report will be out later. It was not in Casey's written report, was not put together. So if you have any questions, I'm sure we can reach out to Shane. At that, we'll move on to the Chamber Convention and Visitors Bureau. Good evening, Christina.
Good evening, Michael. Welcome to our new member, Nicole, and welcome back, Travis. It's wonderful to see everyone here. A couple of things we've been working on, our erigite is finally complete. We ordered 30,000 copies this year, plan to go through all of those. We will need to reevaluate how we do this project in the future because just paper costs and not having a graphic designer on staff has skyrocketed the price of that project where it's no longer affordable to do it in the means in the way we are. But I am confident that there's a couple other avenues we can explore that will be much more cost-effective for us. If you remember, beginning of last year, we had developed some maps of our area to include outlying military installations. We've gone through 5,000 of those maps in the last year. So we're doing a reprint of those and should have more of those in stock in the next month or so. I think I mentioned to you last month, our DTN schedule is now set. I think we were waiting on one band, and we've booked that now. So that is has been published on our Facebook page, and we're working on updating our website information on that. To follow those events, either follow us on Facebook or downtownthursdaynights.com, and sponsorship opportunities are available. We're preparing for our Job and Career Fair on May 19th in conjunction with the Toma High School and area employment agencies, looking at a couple of creative ways to increase the general public's attendance on those events. We do have a good population of the school district that goes through, about 400 students in particular, and just looking at a couple of ways to increase the public's participation. We have we usually have about 75 vendors at that event, so it's a good time. We are reevaluating the wayfinding signage that is in Toma currently. That project was done by the CVB probably, I'm guessing, 10 years ago. And it's just at a point where things are outdated, the branding's outdated, the locations are outdated on some of it. So we have entered into a separate contract with Van de Welle and Association outside of what what contract the city has with them. And they'll be doing a drive-through on Thursday. And we have identified some preliminary locations and routes for signage. Again, in the infancy stages, nothing set in stone, but working on their guidance to develop that project. I think I mentioned last month that our building repairs are either complete or nearing completion, which is is fun and exciting because now we have a couple more building repairs. We found another leak in one of our storage rooms, completely separate from the water leak we had in my office. So we have to do some mold mitigation, remove some drywall, whatever that process is. I don't speak contracting, so. But thank you for city staff for working with us to file claims with the insurance, find contractors, and help that move along so that we can get that mitigated and put together. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. I would entertain a motion regarding the temporary Class B license and temporary Class B license application by Queen and Apostles to sell fermented malt beverages and wine as Technology Dinner fundraiser on May 6, 2023. Temporary Class B license application by BLW Post 1382 to sell fermented malt beverages at its chicken queue on May 6, 2023. Temporary Class B license application by Monroe County Tavern League to sell fermented malt beverages at the Monroe County Tavern League Pool Tournament on January 12 through 14, 2024. March 31, 2023 Cash and Investments Report. Approval of minutes from March 21, 2023, and the budget amendment transferring $6,000 from account 01-48900 to account 01-521000-3400.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Dean and I believe it was Richard with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion in the rejection of the bids for the Recreation Park Ice Center.
I'll make a motion to reject the bid.
Second.
And send it back to the parks.
We have a motion from Peterson and second from Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion for the approval of Officer Blackhawk and Officer Regal to attend K-9 Training in Beaton, Ontario, Canada in the fall of 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the approval of airport hangar lease between Matthew Curry and the City of Toma.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion by Yarrington, second by Glenn. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the resolution for the monthly payment of monthly bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for the waiving of the first reading of the ordinance repealing Section 28-82 Carrying Dangerous Weapon and amendment and amending Section 44-181 Operation of ATVs and UTVs of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is that Travis?
Yeah.
Schulze and Glenn. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion regarding the waiving of the second reading of the ordinance repealing Section 28-82 Carrying Dangerous Weapon and amending Sections 44-1-181 Operation of ATVs and UTVs of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yarrington and Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion regarding the adoption of ordinance repealing Section 28-82 Carrying Dangerous Weapons and amending Section 44-181 Operation of ATVs and UTVs of the City of Toma Municipal Code.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Schulze. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the final resolution authorizing public improvement, levying special assessments against benefited properties in Toma, Wisconsin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Glenn, second by Peter. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can we do this under our spectrum on the mirror? Okay, we'll start with the. Let me start here. Okay, I would entertain a motion regarding the city attorney, the appointed pending precour attorney-at-law. Will be approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Schulze, second by Yarrington. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying. I don't know if I can move. My wife works there, too. She's the hardest one. We're working one in Congress, too. Side note. We have one abstention approved. Elect the president of the council. I will entertain nomination of the president of the council.
I may motion to nominate John Glenn for president.
Any other nominations?
Who's nomination's been opposed?
Second. We have one nomination, so I don't think we need to vote on that. Congratulations, John. We will move to elect the vice president.
I'm sorry, can we just a little more just a sec? Who we did the?
Richard. And I second. And then Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain nominations for a vice president of the council, please.
Question. Does the person, president have, vice president have, seat president?
That's the that's the best word to election. They are not here to object.
I just want to check. So nomination would be Sean Sabinski.
I would like to nominate Travis Chelty.
Any other nominations? Do we have paper?
Yep, I'm making it right now.
Wow, high-tech. Congratulations, Travis. You are selected as the vice president of the council. I would. We don't need to vote on that one. You already did. All right, so designate the Monroe County Herald as our newspaper. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to take a moment as this is perhaps the most dignified appointment that and for those of you in the room that don't understand the significance of this, it is an honor to have a weed commissioner in the City of Toma and
First Lady's very happy.
First Lady is very happy to be the first lady of weed commissioner. I did entertain a motion for the appointment of Kirk Garret.
Second.
Move to approve. We have a motion by Schulze and seconded by Peterson. Any discussion? Kirk, would you like to give a speech? Kirk, would you like to give a speech in regard to that?
It never gets old.
Never gets old.
The weed just kept rolling.
All those, there are several people in the community that would run for that position if it had a different connotation to it, just so you know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee of the whole will be made up of Travis Schulze, Richard Yerington, John Glenn, Sean Zabinski, Nicole Hart, Lamont Kiefer, Nellie Peter, and Dean Peterson. I would entertain a motion regarding the Public Works and Utilities Commission, appointing Nicole Hart, Kerwin Greenow, Dean Peterson, John Glenn, and Lamont Kiefer.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do one.
No. Oh, sorry. Committee of the whole, entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Peterson and Glenn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going back to Public Works, entertain a motion for the approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Peterson and Glenn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police and Fire Commission, entertain a motion of the appointment of Oakland. Motion. Will do approve.
Second.
Schulze for the motion and Glenn for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Recreation Committee, the appointment of DeeDee Nelson, Travis Schulze, Josephine Piper, and Dean Peterson.
Will to approve.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, second by Yerington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Planning Commission, Travis Schulde, Schulze, Brian Meyer, John Glenn, Tina Thompson.
Will to approve.
Glenn with the motion, Peterson with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Housing Authority, Lamont Kiefer and Richard, Richard Yerington. Move to approve.
Second.
Schulze with the motion and Yerington with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Appeals, the appointment of Greg Wannschneider, Jeremy Likely, and Rick Murray.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Yerington, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Emergency Management Committee, consists of Kirk Garret, Michael Murray, Penny Precor, Scott Olom, Tim Adler, Kirk, Kirk Garret, and Tim Adler. Will do approve.
Second.
Motion by Schulze, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Board to review, the appointment of Lamont Kiefer, Richard Yerington, and Sean Zabinski.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Yerington, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Ambulance Commission, the appointment of Kerwin Greenow, Brady Sorensen, and Sandra Berg.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Yerington, a second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Library Board, the appointment of Candace Zimes and Marge Giggas. Will do approve.
Second.
Motion by Schulze, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Joint City School Committee, appointment of Kirk Garret, Nicole Hart, Nellie Peter, and Scott Olom.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Convention and Visitors Bureau, the appointment of Travis Schulze, Chris Schreier, Carrie Molk, and Molly Powell.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Glenn, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Toma Senior Disabled Services Board, Evelyn Noes, Mary Watkins, and Sue Greenow appointments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Lake Committee, the appointment of Dwayne Chapman, Lamont Kiefer, and Lee Lane.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ethics Board, Eric Price, to fulfill the remaining term of due pay ending in 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson, second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Long Range Planning Committee, Travis Schulze and Jeff Holtz appointments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Yerington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Historic Preservation Committee, appointment of Jim Winezado, Nellie Peter, and Sean Zabinski.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to designate Hagan Sports Network as our broadcaster of the city council and committee of the whole meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?